All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 29th, 2018, and we will begin with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
You have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carried, and we will begin with our board reports. Nate, you are first.
All right. So, I currently attend Leonardtown High School, and one of the clubs that I'm involved in at the school is S2S, or otherwise known as student to student, and I recently joined the leadership, or Executive Leadership Board, which helps to steer the committee, basically. But, at the school, we host this new student orientation. It was held on August 27th, and it's basically just a time to invite any new student entering Leonardtown High School into our school, showing them what it's like, what type of classes they're going to have, walking them through their schedule, and just getting them ready for everyday life in high school. It generally focuses on freshmen, however, we do have lots of transfers. I, for instance, was a transfer when I first came in, so that's a big reason why I ended up joining the committee. But it was just really nice getting to welcome in the new students, show them how our school works, and actually getting them excited, or as excited that they can be, for coming back to school. And then tomorrow, we will actually be hosting our open house from 12:30 to 2:00, so you guys are more than welcome to come if you guys have children that are going there.
Last week, I went to a, it was a community fundraiser. It was held at a local restaurant down at Top Timbers, and the fundraiser was to benefit Great Mills High School Recovery Program. The, actually Jim Davis's wife had put it on. It was really well attended, and besides the hors d'oeuvres and everything, they had some films, and they had four films, and it was people in the community, local people, I think one was just from like the southern Maryland area, and the other three were from St. Mary's, that put together these films. One gentleman was from Leonardtown, and he had done these drawings about what Leonardtown looked like in the past, and just like a little dialogue going along about, about these, these buildings, and about, you know, back when he was little. One of them was very comical, was one about St. Mary's City. Two young men did that one, you know, and told a little bit about the history of St. Mary's City, but it was, you know, there were some funny parts in there. So, but overall, it was a great time. It represented like local artists really doing, you know, putting together these films, and also the fundraiser for Great Mills.
Let's see, winding down summer, a little disappointed, but everyone's excited to go back to school, maybe. Um, let's see, last week, we welcomed 119 new teachers.
Hundred and twenty now, plus and growing.
Right, right, at that time, it was 119.
Nineteen, right.
Uh, last week, so I had the opportunity, Mrs. Washington was there, Mr. Davis was there for a brief bit. I know Rita, you were dropping kids off at college, and Kathy was on vacation, but just to meet and talk to all of the new teachers, and just welcome them. A lot of them were transfers in from other school systems. We do have a number of new teachers. We have several who were taught by either Dr. Montgomery or Dr. Smith, which Dale Farrell was very apt at pointing out to everyone in the room, so that was a good chuckle for everyone. And then they broke off into different, you know, work groups and sessions based on, you know, what their, what their expertise and their pathway was, so overall, very good. Nice job by Dr. Smith, keeping everyone engaged, embarrassing some, but it was a great icebreaker. So, good job.
You stole, you stole my report.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna talk about, I'm allowed to talk about it anyway. New teacher orientation, it was a wonderful group of teachers, 119 teachers at the time. Many of them were graduates of SMCPS, and we were glad to see that they wanted to come back to work in the school system, so that meant they had great experiences at our school system and with our teachers, that they wanted to pursue education. The teachers were from as far as Alaska to the Philippines, but most of them were from the East Coast, right, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia. Let's see, and like, you said, they were former students of Dr. Smith.
They're coming back.
They're coming back.
Yeah.
Despite that, I'm just kidding.
And he was, it made him realize his age, his age, that these were his former students who are now teaching.
Oh, yeah.
And Ms. Montgomery too, she's beautiful, so, I mean, also, I want to thank.
One of us is showing our age.
Yeah.
I would just drop it right there.
Well, he means himself.
Correct, absolutely.
He's such, he's too kind, but she looks fabulous, Dr. Montgomery. I want to thank HR for doing a fabulous job. They were wonderful. Thanks to our partners who were there, our collective association, the NAACP, and the, one of the credit unions were there, so it was a wonderful event. It was high energy, they were energetic, and I know it felt like their first day of school all over again, so it's gonna be a wonderful school year, and I ask everybody to pray for our students, our teachers, our school system, to keep everybody safe, and just let the students have a fun learning, safe time, and everybody, so I would appreciate that, that if everybody do that, and I know they do anyway, many of them. So, we ask for extra prayers for our system, our county, our elected leaders, and everybody, family, friends, enemies, and everybody. Okay, thank you very much.
As Mrs. Bailey indicated, I have been on vacation. My husband and I took a lovely trip to Maine to visit other family, but I am excited about next week, and board members split up and go and visit all of the schools on the first day, really just to kind of see all the things that are going on, but let staff and students know that we care very much about their experience, and are in schools often to ensure that if there are other things that we should be doing or could be doing, that we figure that out and we bring that forward, so looking forward to it.
Yeah, well, it's also, it's wonderful to tap into that excitement.
It is.
It's actually, it's actually part of that, that first day back, the, the well-chosen outfit just so, the.
Sleepy children.
The sleepy children, certainly at middle school, yeah, as everybody gets back, gets back into the, into the routine. In fact, we're getting back into the routine this week. We have all of our teachers are, are back in schools this week, preparing for, getting ready for, and eager to welcome all of our students. Tomorrow is indeed open house across the, across the system, so we will be welcoming all of our students into the school throughout the day, as they can kind of get their way, walk around, see where things are, become familiar with the teachers and, and room assignments. I think it'll, I think it'll be a really wonderful day, and then we have a long weekend, and then we start on Tuesday, so start of school, September 4th, everybody be ready. I think we're in for just a, just a fantastic school year.
And when are the buses doing, or have they already done their, their dry run?
They've already, they've already done their dry run.
Very good.
Yep, we're already, we're already through.
Cool.
Jeff Thompson and the, all of his staff are responding to requests. If they have an issue with your stop, make sure that you can contact them directly, and all that information is, is out there. Hack went live last week on Friday, so everybody could go online and find out who their, who their teachers are, and then share notes to see who's in what class and where, and it was successfully stayed operational all day long. I think we, I think we've got that, I think we've got that down. Over the last couple of weeks, it certainly has been fun to work, to work with staff and to welcome back teachers and get back into the swing of things. We also did have staff go up and present at the Maryland Centers School Safety Conference up in Annapolis on August 18th, and actually, we finished our presentation with one of the videos that was showcased at the, at the fundraiser, the We Are Great Mills, that, that incredibly powerful video, really just a beautiful piece of work and a great way to culminate a presentation about what makes St. Mary's County such a strong community. It was, it was really very well received. Last Friday, we had the gathering presentation at St. Mary's College. This is a culminating summer program for our rising freshmen who will be attending Great Mills High School, where they have an opportunity at Great Mills High School, and then it continues on down to the college, to do fun activities, to do instructionally-based activities, but then also do things experimental with different media and art, and it culminates in a, in a wonderful performance. I know that Dr. Marr and I enjoy every single year going there and, and seeing the great work of our, of our children. One person, there are so many people there directly involved with that work, both at the college and in our school system. The counselors are actually great, are actually the college, St. Mary's College students in their MAT program, so they actually get some real hands-on opportunities to interact with kids throughout the entire, throughout the entire summer before they then come back, and they are very excited about the school year starting, because they are going to be in our school's student teaching across St. Mary's County. It's, it was really a great deal of fun. So, I think we're ready. Ms. Meadows, so tomorrow, when I go to Leonardtown High School for orientation, I'll be able to seek you out, and perhaps you can, you can take my rising freshman and show him the rope, show him where to go.
I sure can.
Absolutely, I look forward to it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a great day. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will move right into our recognitions with Mr. Michael White.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, it's my privilege, I guess, to continue with the theme of what makes St. Mary's County a strong and vibrant community, and part of that are certainly our students. So, following the tragedy at Great Mills, we had members of our Chopticon High School class of 2020 initiate a community project, and they were decided to support school safety and security through that project and promote community unity. Class officers Jamie Smith and Blair Belandaham, Jamie was then the vice president of the class, and Blair was the president, led the We Are Great Mills fundraiser, and Jamie is here tonight to make a presentation to the board and Dr. Smith, so Jamie, if you please.
Um, so after what happened at Great Mills, well, our, during, when, okay, so.
You did great on Channel 4, you can do this again.
I know.
Oh, my gosh, you, yeah. You are exceptionally composed on Channel 4, I watched it, and I was amazed, very well done.
Thank you.
Sure, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
And then, well, one of the, our projects we were working on, working on at the class 2020, we wanted to design a kindness shirt, so it was already on customing, trying to design shirts, but then what happened at Great Mills was all over the internet and all over social media, so then I wanted to try to do something, so me and my sister Amy were laying on the dining room floor, listening to Hamilton, and then I kind of just came up with a shirt, and then I, once we got back to school, I pitched the idea, and then everything kind of took off, so.
That was absolutely wonderful. So, the, you could go online, you could purchase this shirt, and then the proceeds from the shirt all came back to us, and what was the culminating amount that ultimately you're giving us today?
Six thousand, six hundred and six dollars.
It would be six thousand, six hundred and six dollars. So, thank you very much. We'll stop and take a picture when we're all done, but just stand right there for just one second. So, this is, this is really, when we, when we presented at the Center for, the Maryland Center for School Safety, and we really talked about what happened at the school, it's, it, you know, it's certainly a very traumatic event, but it, on the other side of that, as you, as you come through and you talk about how, they wanted to know how the other schools reacted, they wanted to know how our kids were doing, they wanted to know what the climate and culture was across St. Mary's County, and I'm just so proud of Chopticon High School, and particularly the work that you guys did, but the whole Choose Kindness campaign that you have been, that you went through the entire year, the Choose Kindness rally that you held, where everybody really embraced that idea that every single person matters, and that one kind act can never be underestimated. You have no idea what a small act of kindness can mean to somebody who truly needs it, and so you embody that. I thank you very much for the money, it will be put to very good use. We look forward to coming back and reporting to you. We're gonna come out to your school and talk a little bit about what we've done with the funds, and how we've added to the safety and security of all of our students in St. Mary's County public schools. So, just thank you again, thank you very much, and board, if you'd like, we can, wanna take a break so we can get a picture, because they checked. Nicely done, so we're gonna get a picture with a big check.
But I also, I left it like three minutes ago.
And we'll be right in with Dr. Marr, he's gonna start right back up with us.
I'll get ready.
So, let's see, we have no public hearing, we have no public comment, let's see, consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, motion carried. Actually, we have none today, so Dr. Marr, back to school.
Hi. Well, as was just mentioned a moment ago, students arrive through the doors, 18,000 strong, on Tuesday, September 4th. Typically, we've done this presentation after the start of the school year. We thought that this year, what we'd do is share some of the things that are being done to prepare for opening the doors, and also share some resources for the community about what they can look for in order to prepare for school's opening. So, let's take a walk back into the summer. Throughout the summer, our students and our staff have been busy. Many students have stayed engaged through the Lunch and Learn program, and through many summer enrichment camps and opportunities. Our teachers, our leaders, our support staff have participated in a multitude of professional development opportunities to get ready for the school year, and today was, a lot of professional development was going on for our system-wide professional development day in the last few days, the school-based professional development. As Dr. Smith mentioned, and, and several of you mentioned last week, was when we welcomed new teachers. Human Resources has been working tirelessly to bring our newest teachers aboard, and last week, we welcomed them to new teacher orientation. Over 120 new certified staff, 25 of them are graduates of St. Mary's County Public Schools. There were 57 teachers transferred between schools, 69 non-certificated hires, as well as new administrators in our schools and administrative changes. Our support staff have also been busy, working throughout the summer to prepare our schools and our stu, for our students when they arrive next week. This included such projects as the new relocatable at Fairlead 2, which you see in the bottom left-hand corner, as well as the resurfacing of the track at Chopticon High School. In addition, the hallways, the classrooms were prepped, cleaned, and ready for students and staff to arrive. This summer, our staff also prepared for our new mathematics textbooks and instructional resources, such as those you saw at recent board meetings, including Pebble Go and the new Naviance program. As students arrive next week, they'll also have access to our new online student handbook, a completely browsable version of the handbook and Code of Conduct, which is online now, and can be accessed on, through a typical web browser or through your mobile device. Students, staff, and community will also notice enhancements to safety and security, such as the presence, presence of additional sheriff's deputies and safety assistants, as well as the new prototype security vestibule and access station at Great Mills High School. As we begin the 2018, 2019 school year, we are committed to sharing our story and making meaningful connections. Our work supports the whole child in their social, emotional, and academic growth. To this end, we address four phases of support that will be addressed throughout the year. They are connecting, belonging, aspiring, and thriving. Throughout our communication, we will be addressing these throughout the year, each quarter, taking on one of these themes. In the first quarter of the school year, we'll begin by emphasizing the importance of connecting with one another and getting to know what brings us together in our classrooms, our schools, and the broader community that we serve. For our students, teachers, and, and other staff, they connect with our students each day. When we welcome them next week, the focus will be on building relationships with them and encouraging them in their instruction. As the school year gets started, we will connect with students through the Superintendent's Student Leadership Advisory Council, or SLAC, as schools continue with their advisory councils. We also emphasize the connections with our staff. Last week, we launched the Signal, a bi-weekly e-newsletter to help our staff stay, stay up to date with updates from all divisions across the school system. Additionally, we'll be meeting quarterly with the Superintendent's Advisory Group of Employees, or the Sage Group, which includes representative staff from across the system. This group includes our nominees from each school for our Teachers of the Year, Education Support Professionals of the Year, and Leaders of the Year. Finally, we connect with our community. This, our school system website offers the most ubiquitous resource for parents, community to access information about our system, our schools, and our activities. So, as we prepare to open the doors next week, the website has abundant information for back-to-school. This can be accessed on the front page of the website by just clicking the image here on the front, or by clicking the Students tab at the top. This brings you to the Student Portal, which then can also provide you the back-to-school information. The back-to-school page includes information about registration, if you have, say, a new kindergartner, or someone new to the school system. It includes the vaccination requirements, bus stop information, school lunch information, how to add money to your school account, as well as information about each school's school supply list, as well as the open house schedules, many of which are scheduled for The latest information our community can, can find is by accessing our Facebook and Twitter accounts as well, and those linked, are linked on the front page of the website, you can click there, and our front page also includes the Twitter feed, so you don't have to have a Twitter account to, to see our updates on Twitter. But if you, if you take a look at the feed, you'll see updates from our schools, announcements, and other pertinent information. We look forward to the connections we're gonna make throughout the school year. We're excited about the new school year, and we welcome our staff and students back.
All right, okay, well, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. Also, I think you guys have been very active throughout the summer, which I think is very important for getting ready for the beginning of school, because without that structure, we kind of lose focus of what's important throughout the school year. I know students are very, or some students will be kind of hesitant about coming back, but I think, me being one of them, because I've got a lot going on, but I think we're all going to go, or we're headed in the right direction, and I think you guys are very prepared and properly prepared to help deal with any problems that might arise, if any, because you guys are so prepared, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for doing things throughout the summer and all the activities that you do, especially with the new teachers coming in, and I look forward to my first-day visit.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
I'll, I'll echo everything that was said. Great job, I know there's been a lot of administrative changes, there's been a lot of teacher changes, so I think some of the schools are gonna look very different when, when everyone walks in for open house, and I think that's, you know, it's all part of, of growing, so.
The citizens often wonder what happens in the summer. They say, oh, everybody in the system's like on vacation and taking a break. Not really. Everyone's working very diligently to get school prepared and open for the first day. I want to thank Safety and Security for all that they have done. Dr. Marr, all you've done with training, professional development. Ms. Dr. Kelly Hall for supplemental programs. Dr. Walker, tremendous work with our building service workers, buses, that whole support system, that we could not open school without all that you do, you know, caf, building, food service workers, all of that. So, everybody's been working diligently, and in all areas. We are working very hard in the summer. I want to thank you for continuous improvement, Dr. Marr, with the online handbook and the Code of Conduct book, that fits in with our board goals of effective and efficient uses of resources, and fits in with continuous improvement, and you have helped us accomplish to it, our board goals. Making connections with the students is very important, that teachers share their story. This helped with building strong relationships, and then the students will open up, share their stories, and be more engaged with the learning process. So, it's so, excuse me, I shouldn't have candy in my mouth. I'm so sorry, I would be in trouble.
That is not allowed on the first day of school.
I know, it's terrible, I'm setting a poor example by having peppermint in my mouth. So, thank everybody for all that you have done, Dr. Montgomery, everybody, Fiscal Services, everybody, we're ready, we're gonna open, we're gonna open on time, the buses will flow, students will be fed, and the buildings will be clean, the floors will be sparkling, the grass is cut.
Absolutely.
We're ready.
We are ready.
We're ready. Thank you very much, everyone.
I certainly echo what's been said thus far. I'd also like to thank the superintendent. I think it's very telling that you have developed a path by which students can meet with you directly, and then take information that's discussed with you back to their schools and share that, that it's a two-way street for communication, and I applaud the fact that you're now including staff in that.
Oh, absolutely.
I think one of the things we sometimes hear is that, is anybody listening? You know, what's going on? And that opportunity for students themselves to see how things are going, and to share with you, you know, it, what, they as sort of end users, how is it turning out? Is it, is it coming out the way that you expect? And so, there's opportunities to make tweaks as needed, I think is very positive, and I don't know how many superintendents across the state take such a proactive approach and, and such demonstrated active interest in what their students are doing, so hats off to you.
I definitely think it's a function of our size. We are perfectly sized. It is really nice, so we, you know, we really can get representative students from each one of the high schools and programs to get together, like that really is, any larger, it would be really difficult, any smaller, we, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be able to find the, the space. I have to tell you that Jeff, Dr. Marr, Dr. Marr and I, that's the, and we tell, and we tell the kids when we meet with them, honestly, that's the highlight of our work. Our highlight of the work is being able to go out and sit on, sit in on their principal's advisory committee out in their schools, or to bring them together for quarterly meetings, and to talk to them about what's going on, because the one thing that we certainly have discovered is that, is that teenagers like to share their story, and they like to be in a space where they feel comfortable sharing that story. And our best learning is when, is when we listen, we learn best when we listen, and so that really is, that really is important. Our focus this year is on making sure that we're all informed and we're communicating, and we start with, we started with, and you heard me speak with the, with the, our new teachers about connecting, and we had that exercise where they gave us information and funny, funny photos that they, that they had shared, and we hope that they see the benefit of that, and they model that when they get into their classroom. One of the things that we emphasized in our first Signal edition was a little hyperlink to a, to a, to an article called "The First Five Minutes," and it's all about how you give yourself that first five minutes when you're, when you're, when you're convening your class, to take a moment to, to just talk with the students and other members about how, how things are going, what's going on in their lives, and making, making that connection. We start that very early on with our youngest learners, and with a social-emotional focus on what we're doing with kids. You know, we start with Frog Street and conscious discipline, and then we, you know, then we roll up to responsive classroom, that then goes up into PBIS and multi-tiered systems of support and restorative practices and restorative justice, and it really is the way we connect all people together. So, we are really, really ready. I think it's gonna be a great start of school to Dr. Marr and his team. They certainly make us look very purposeful and polished. All of the resources that are presented are scalable on your mobile device. We recognize that with our wonderful millennials with whom we are hiring and folding back in, they do the majority of their, of their research on their, on their phone, and as do our, as do our very busy parents. So, all that information is all scalable, the website scales to the phone, all that is researchable and brought down there, so I think that that's really gonna be something that we emphasize with kids as we go out and talk to them this year. We are ready. Thank you, Dr. Marr.
Thank you.
My technology's failing me.
See, that's why you need a computer like mine.
We have offered all the, the next, the PC or Dell.
I have the dinosaur model.
Hey, look, everybody, it's Dr. Jaffers and Dr. Montgomery. Hey, look, everybody, it's Dr. Jaffers and Dr. Montgomery, or more appropriately, Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Jaffers.
So, we are presenting our PARC data. Um, we, yesterday, there was a press release from MSDE that was releasing, um, the state data. And, um, so we've got some news to share about how we did on that assessment. Uh, PARC was administered to all SMCPS students in grades three through eight. Uh, there's a, a reading assess, um, a, an ELA assessment and a math assessment. And then for high school, our ELA ten students and our Algebra one ta- students take the assessment. All PARC assessments are aligned to the Maryland College and Career Readiness Assess, Readiness Standards. So, the PARC assessments, um, define the knowledge and skills of, that all students should master by the end of each grade level. So, they, um, they assess essentially the standards that are in the curriculum, and, um, we, we have, expect them to master those standards so that they can graduate from high school and be fully prepared to be career and or college ready.
Yeah, so, um, students, uh, can earn a scale score between six hundred and fifty and eight hundred and fifty, uh, points on each PARC assessment. Based on each student's scale score, PARC performance is reported back to each LEA as one of five different PARC performance levels, level one, two, three, four, and five. Level four means they've met the college and career readiness expectations. Level five means they've exceeded the college and career readiness expectations. If we didn't hit that four and five, then that's a signal to us as the LEA that we, uh, we're getting close, we're approaching, we're partially or did not meet in level one, two, and three respectively. Uh, presently in Maryland, only level four and level five denote grade level and or course proficiency. Uh, before you hear is the twenty eighteen, uh, results of PARC versus the Maryland, and this is the aggregate. We don't have the disaggregated data up here for you. We just have our aggregate, and I'm pleased to announce that on every level, uh, grade level, every course, we have beat the state, uh, and the differences are, um, sort of, uh, in every content, uh, before you. So, uh, you can see we had ELA three, four, and five, six, seven, eight, ten, all positive. Uh, the differences between us and the state and Maryland, um, uh, as well as the mathematics side, we had, um, differences between our performance in Maryland, and I'm pleased to announce that we are higher than the state, again, on every content, every grade level. Uh, the next two slides are just the broken down, just differentiated and said in a different way. Um, you can see blue being St. Mary's County and orange being the Maryland, um, uh, aggregate, and you can see in this particular display that this is the ELA side. Uh, it looks like in ELA elementary, we have more of a, um, of a difference. Uh, in our aggregate score, mean score versus now the, um, the Maryland aggregate, uh, and it looks like as we move closer, uh, and up the food chain to ELA ten, which is a graduation requirement, uh, they've, um, our, our lead, if you will, has gotten smaller. Uh, math, as you can see, uh, we have beat the state across grade levels, blue being St. Mary's County, Maryland being the, uh, the orange, and as we move, uh, three through Algebra one, uh, the differences in our performances are before you here, so.
Okay, so, um, this upcoming administration in two thousand nineteen, so for the eighteen, nineteen school year, is going to be the last time that our students will take the PARC assessment. So, the state of Maryland is transitioning to the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program. If we go to the next slide, I can talk through some of the details. Um, so, there are several assessments that are gonna fall under what we're gonna refer to as the MCAP, so we're gonna do a lot of, uh, preparing for that over the next couple of years. Right now, the only thing we know is that it's going to continue to measure ELA in grades three through eight, and also ELA in grade ten. It's going to continue to measure math in grades three through eight, and then Algebra one as well, and then Algebra two, um, and geometry. And then, we're also going to be looking at the Maryland Integrated Science Assessment, or MISA, which we have given, um, already this first, this year is going to be the first year that MISA scores are going to count for us, and we don't have our two thousand eighteen data for that yet. Um, and then, and that's gonna be in grades five through eight, and it's also going to replace HSA Biology in the high school. Um, HSA Government is remaining the same, the test changed, and this year is the fir- first administration of the new assessment in HSA Government. But, it's, there, we're not piloting it, it's just where these, these scores are gonna count for the students. And then, a Social Studies in grade eight is being considered, it's under consideration right now. So, that's what the new MCAP umbrella is going to consist of, and our students are going to be taking those assessments in two thousand and twenty. We have literally no other information from the state about what those assessments are going to look like.
Other than they will be aligned to the current Maryland College Career Readiness Standards. The standards remain the same. Um, but as far as the, the particular platform and the organization of the intellectual items, once they get put together, there, that's, that's what MSD is working on this year.
Right, yes, yes.
That'll be for the math in the LA. Then we have the next generation standards in science, that'll be for the MISA. And the government standards are still the government standards, so, all in all, nothing's changing with our standards, which is good, so. The last slide is just, uh, we had a sample, I, uh, individual student report. I don't think the link is working.
Oh, no.
So, I, maybe it's in the, um, maybe we saved in the PDF here, I'll have to look for it, but I don't, but normally, that's what goes home for the students. They see it, they see how they've done, um, see how they've done in comparative to the, um, to the district, and also to the state, individual student performance for both math, and also for the LA scr- uh, uh, students, so.
Is it pretty much the same format as last year that gives all the ex- uh, explanations to the parents to see what's going on?
It is, it is, it's the same report.
Yep.
Let's see if, is it, see if Dr. Mar might be able to, to assist with that.
It works, it's magic. Like, do you have any questions?
Um, just, is, so this is new program, I know you don't necessarily know what information is going to be on it, but I know we're switching from PARC to this new program. How different, I guess, format-wise is it going to be? Is it still going to be computer-based?
We've been told it's still going to be computer-based, so, and, and very similar assessment items, and very similar rigor, rigorous standards.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Okay.
Now, when you hand these forms out to the parents, do you have, like, an information time for them? You know, like, after, like, say, it's sent home with the student, let's say, on the first day? Then, do you have something maybe a week later where the parents can gather and you can go through an explanation of what this all means?
Usually, um, usually they meet, they'll meet with individual parents that have questions about the assessments, but there are definitely, um, there are some schools that do come in and do an explanation of PARC, and typically, those sessions happen bef- right before they're getting ready to give the PARC assessments, they'll bring parents in to kind of go through what their kids are going to experience, but, and not every school does that, so that's not, that's not something that we've done in every school, but, um, they'll bring them in and explain what it is. But it's typically, if there's, if a parent has questions, they're gonna come in, they should come in and meet with their child's principal or counselor to go through their individual scores, so that they can, you know, talk in details about their own child's report, and I think that that's more valuable.
Yeah, I think the individual school reports that Jeff has brought up are very detailed. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory, uh, for people to walk through, but it also, they can access their principal and they're accessible to school if there's additional questions, so.
Now, I know that you like statistics and math, um, so have you followed any, like, group, let's say, um, the fourth graders last year? How did they fare, you know, in, you know, have they mo- have they increased in their performance?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, the way the PARC has been psycho, it's psychometrically, uh, scaled, where we have evaluated a test. So, if a, if a student gets seven forty-four last year, and they get seven forty-five this year, that's a positive scale point, and that's very good. I mean, anytime that we get positive and we have hard, harder content, that's always something to celebrate, and we review that big to small. We look at all the system, and we look at the school data, and we've shared all that information, uh, with the schoolhouses. And we draw all that down to the students. Do the students, maybe, do they level jump? Do they move from a level two to a level three? And if they didn't do that, uh, did they show that one or two-point gain that we're looking for?
On their scale scores.
On the scale scores. Uh, for the most part, um, we had mixed results. We had, some cohorts did show positive gains, uh, year to, year to year, and some, some groups did not.
And it was based on, by school, too. So, some schools had, um, had good growth between the cohorts, and that's one of the things that we unpack as a system, that we look at that cohort data and see how the third graders in two thousand seventeen did compare to them as fourth graders in two thousand eighteen, and fourth to fifth, and sixth. We, we look at all of that data, and then break it down for, you know, for each school and each content area.
Do you find any particular grade where there's a drop in progress?
Yeah, I think there's, um, there was, there was, uh, two in particular. There was, um, we had some weakness in sixth grade math, and some weakness in, uh, eighth grade math, and some weakness in Algebra one.
Okay.
But, but realistically, when, when we're looking at the scores, and specifically, so in eighth grade, there is, so, the students sitting in eighth grade, they either take the Algebra assessment, which then counts over there to Algebra, or they take the eighth grade assessment.
Different kid.
So, the students who are taking the eighth grade assessments are those who were not in, in, in an Algebra level course, so it becomes a, it becomes a smaller cohort of kids. And when we looked at our Algebra data this year, Algebra and, um, ELA ten, for the first time, it wasn't a cohort reporting, they just, any, anybody who took ELA ten this year was included, whether they were taking it for the first time or the third time, whether they took it in the January administration, and then took it at the end of the year, and the same thing with Algebra one. They just said, all of the children who took it, here's the average for the whole group. So, a lot of times, when we're looking at the, the, the state-level data for Algebra and for English ten, you'll see that there's a, there's a, there's a drop there, and that's because, for the first time ever, they weren't just reporting out the cohort, they were reporting anybody who took that test that particular year.
So, you could have, let's say, a tenth grader that's taken, okay.
Yeah.
Or an eighth grader or seventh grader taking Algebra.
And I think what Scott said is that's why we have more weakness at the high school. Um, the, the state, their quote was, there were statistically significant gains across the state in every grade, three to eight, every content. Uh, they, uh, saw weakness in high school, ELA ten, and Algebra one across the state, for the reason that Scott cited, that we have, this is the first year that we've included the January test takers in the PARC cohort, when we, um, look at the cumulative results from two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very, I don't have any questions, mine were, mine were similar to Mrs. Weaver's and.
I'm glad to see that we're in the positive column, uh, as we compare ourselves with the state of Maryland, and that's where we wanna stay. We wanna stay in the positive column, so we keep moving up, continuous improvement. Thank you.
Is there any way for you to disaggregate that information, so that, um, while the state may not be looking at it specifically, you'll be able to determine, um, if, how the students who are, are taking those tests, um, for the second or third time, how they have progressed in between the first time they took it, and whatever their next or last time that they've taken it? And then, um, and then to, um, also look at the students who are perhaps taking it for the first time? Um, because I think that information for us is a lot more meaningful than the state's decision to lump everything together.
We will, and we, and we have, we, the, the, the schools, right away, uh, before we even got that information from the state, were saying, okay, our data files aren't matching what you guys are, are sending to us, and it was because of that. They weren't including in their data when they were looking at their scores for their individual kids. They weren't looking at the January test takers and adding that in, so they got this shocking data that said that they had, you know, not done as well as they thought they had, and then they realized that it was, so we, we absolutely are, they're, they're, the schools are grabbing onto this and drilling down to the, right to the individual student level. Looking at lagging data for this year, this, this year's teachers are looking at how their kids have done their lagging data, and how they're doing to set up what they're gonna do for them, starting the school year. So, yeah, they're absolutely drilling down into that.
And then, while I understand that the state board decided that they were only going to count level fours and level fives, and it drives them crazy every time I say, alright, but if you put this on a letter scale of A through F, how many, if you added in those students who are level three, and even a higher level three, just lagging level four, what kind of a percentage would we be looking at for the system in terms of how those, how we have done as a system?
Yeah, we, we would be easily at seventy-five percent. So, we're about seventy to seventy-five percent of our students are three and above. So, um, level three and above, I think it's safe to say that every grade level, every content, um, we would be at, uh, in that three range with seventy-five percent of our kids.
I, you know, and I, I understand that we are, we are, um, aiming to make sure that every student is, um, is prepared. But, every child is different, and, um, I think for us to put just a broad brush label on every chi- you know, across all of them is not fair to each child. Um, so, I, I have to say that I understand what the state's looking at, but I still am trying to really grasp, how many students do we have at that one and two level, and what kinds of interventions are we putting in place to ensure that we're moving them up, and not just by a percentage point, but, you know, that their scale scores are really moving up, demonstrating that they are, um, if not fully mastering that information, that, um, they are coming as close as we can get them, and then we're the next year prepared to take them even farther.
What we probably need Dr. Jaffers to do is come back and talk about the UNIFI system, and the way in which we examine student data, and how we have a multi-tiered system of intervention and support academically. And then specifically, our work this year is to really, with fidelity, be adding, be, be gathering a lot of intervention, uh, data, and then putting it within the system, so we have response to interventions, so we can really see who's making measurable progress based on the particular academic intervention that we're tethering to the student as we, as we, as we walk through all that. That's, the, the, the system that I think you'd be, I think you'd be pretty, if you, if you haven't visited the system since the Performance Matters of Yore, um, to go into the UNIFI system and see the way that the data is organized for teachers, and then to see how they start their year. They start their year looking at and reviewing all the lagging data on all of their students, so that they can then set appropriate, um, academic expectations for them as they come in and build throughout the year. So, it may very well be that, um, we would have Dr. Jaffers come before us and talk about UNIFI, and or perhaps, um, uh, Jeff Gibson, who does a lot of training for staff on, on navigation of the platform, and, and how to use it as an integrated, uh, assessment system, and, and manipulate the data to see how kids are doing. That might be a really fantastic follow-up.
Taking up data and building assessments. They can build their assessments that are tied, tethered to the standards in UNIFI. And I, I think, you know, sort of pulling that curtain back and, and letting, um, letting everyone understand, um, sort of what goes behind all of these scores that are reported out, what we do with them, um, and really the, um, focused way that teachers are, um, working with students to prepare them, I think, uh, would be a real positive. Um, I, I mean, I, I would, I would like to see us do that if, if it worked for, for the board.
I don't think that can be understated, because I think our, our teachers and our staff and our principals have done su- such an exceptional job of coming back, unpacking the data, understanding, you know, where they did well, where they have areas of, of weakness and, um, and improvement, and, and they're gonna go back, and they're gonna retool their plans based on what, what we talked about, to this, to these students, that we had these particular interventions, and Kristen Moore in our office, she's overseeing all the RTI, all the MTSS, uh, data imports, and we'll be able to see data trends for those most challenged, most needy students. So, she's in charge of that, and we have Jeff Gibson that's out there working with PLCs and teams to work on, um, you know, these tests that are tethered to standards, to really drill down and really disaggregate the data to such a degree, and that, we have to really compliment our staff, they've done a fantastic job. They've done amazing work, uh, with, with our students, they really have.
And it's, you know, I, I understand that, that the test will change, but the fact is the curriculum will not. And it's important for people to understand what we're doing, um, because, because we invest a great deal of money in the, um, in the many systems that we've brought in, in order to make this possible, and, um, so.
Can I just, add one more to your point, though? I think for the student that is at a one or two level, I, I would expect with the standards-based report cards, especially in, as they roll out in the lower grades, that that would not be an unexpected score.
Right.
I mean, to be fair, but I think then the one where the most work is, and probably the focus will be on that student that was at a three or four last year and dropped down.
Right.
But, I think, I think, you know, the bulk of the work for those students that, that we had already identified as possibly not being proficient, I don't think the test is showing anything different, but if there's ones that are on the borderline, that I think the standard-based report card will probably help too, because it might drill down, you know, as you look at all the different parts of, you know, the ELA test or the math test, where they need to focus on.
Well, I, I think, you know, when you look at it, those standards-based report cards would just really go back to the fact that, um, it's putting everything in alignment, so that people aren't surprised, and, um, and everybody is looking at the same information.
And, and to a teacher, although PARC is our most public measure that gets reported out, it is the least helpful. it is the least helpful measure to a teacher that's gonna start with their kids on Tuesday.
Right.
Because on Tuesday, they have this, that's a great place, okay, so they'll look at the evidence statements and they'll say, what did my kids not do well on? And maybe they'll start the year looking at that, but then they're gonna do a local diagnostic assessment, and they're gonna have their quarterly assessments, and they're gonna have their mid-year assessment. All of the locally developed assessments that we know are tied, our assessments are linked and tied to the standards. And that's the most helpful for a teacher in looking at a student's progress and what interventions a student needs to be placed in and what standards they're not mastering. So, we look at Park, we present Park, you know, Park is here, but
It's a snapshot.
Exactly, exactly.
Absolutely.
And it's not the most helpful for instruction.
And again, the one, the, the beautiful thing about UNIFI is the fact that we have four years' worth of archived Park data. So, a teacher should, should probably, pretty much, and they've been doing this all week, they've gotten into their data.
Yes, they have.
The kids in front of them, they can see, they already know their kids before they come to them. And, and that's what, that's what the UNIFI system does. It allows us to know our kids early, disaggregate the data, and we, we can make projections as early as October for where these kids are. And I think the, the projections are spot on based on all this lagging historical data that we have embedded in the platform of UNIFI. So it's, it's a really, if, once we embrace this platform, I think it's, it's very powerful because we make data-driven decisions constantly in the classroom, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, I appreciate your.
A great presentation. He's passionate for, he's passionate for.
Talk to him back to do a UNIFI presentation.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Kelly's there?
Okay. Last but not least, is the Chesapeake Public Charter School update, Ms. Funya, Dr. Hall, Hessler.
Heisler.
Thank you. Okay, you wanna click for me?
Yeah, because you're gonna have to pilot seat there, Ange.
Okay. Okay. So.
The Park guy.
Pulling a Chinese shirt.
There we go, there we go, okay.
Got it.
We have to wait for you to get it, Mr. Howard, that's the way it always goes.
It's been a long time since someone used my first name on something like that, it's very exciting.
Good evening. This is a tri, a trifecta of a report. So, we're going to come together this evening. I have Ange Funya here as the Director of Chesapeake Public Charter School, Mrs. Jennifer Wren Heisler, who is the Chairperson of the Charter, Chesapeake Charter School Alliance, and our new Vice Chair, Mrs. Mary Beth Knollman, is also here this evening. So, I'm just gonna do a very few slides that will serve as sort of the evaluation of the charter school from the past school year. And then from there, Mrs. Funya will talk about information that you wanna know about where the school ended last year, where they are this year, moving forward because they are already open. And then, Mrs. Heisler is gonna speak to a federal grant for which they've applied and give you some updates on that. Okay? All right. So, Chesapeake Public Charter School, they, and the Alliance have fulfilled all of the terms and obligations during the seventeen eighteen school year. Their achievement was reviewed according to the timeline for St. Mary's County Public Schools because they are indeed a public school. They have certified and credentialed St. Mary's County Public Staff, they're all hired through Human Resources. Their finances are monitored monthly. The facility is compliant and inspected, and they have adhered completely to the charter agreement. Specifically, the new weighted lottery and expansion went exactly according to the approved plan that they shared with you. The academic achievement, at the time that I submitted this report, the data was embargoed. Now it's not. So, Chesapeake Public Charter School has been a historically high-performing school on the Park assessment and the assessments that came before. They continue to perform at the top of our county and well exceed the state averages. And we can get that information for you, Dr. Jaffers is working on it, we just couldn't include it. The internal review of our preliminary data, what you were just discussing with Dr. Jaffers and Dr. Montgomery, really indicated that, and there were not surprises in, in the data.
And, and all the, all Park data is on the mdreportcard.org site. The embargo was lifted as of yesterday afternoon, so it is available.
Thank you.
The charter school did historically as it has done historically.
Okay, so for finance, they had, the audit results from fiscal seventeen. One finding was noted in internal controls. We worked with Chesapeake Charter School Alliance and, and the school to address that with St. Mary's County Public Schools. There was a Board of Ed, Ed Update done in December, we included the audit report. It has been resolved, they have a very tight procurement process in place, and they're following the same procurement processes that we have in the school system. The audit, the Chesapeake Char, Charter School Alliance audit is scheduled for August twenty-ninth through the thirty-first of this year.
It started today.
Okay, that is today. And then, last thing for finance, their projected end-of-the-year balance is thirty-four thousand dollars. That will roll to what we call the fund balance, and then there will be a discussion about planned usage in twenty twenty. And at this point, what I can say to you is during the course of the year, they met or exceeded all terms and conditions of the grant. They're a school in high, good standing, they're highly, they're highly effective, they're performing well. That being said, Ms. Funya will talk to you about demographics last year as they compare to this year, and she'll take it from there. Okay?
So, we just wanted to highlight, I think, the, the success that we're seeing with the weighted lottery process. You can see that our numbers jumped this year to fourteen percent. The sibling policy had a lot to do with that, our planned growth was three percent per year. As we had students move on through the summer months, we were able to then include siblings of some of the students that had applied and gotten in through the weighted lottery process so that actually upped our numbers a little bit more than we had expected. So that was great. And then, as you can see, we're up to four hundred and forty students for this year, so we have three classes per grade level, K to three this year as part of the expansion.
Okay, so in July, we submitted a grant proposal in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars for our program expansion. The, we traveled to MSD in August, on August eighth, to interview about that grant, and felt like it went really well. And the award notifications are expected, I think it, I thought it was by September tenth-ish. So it should be pretty soon, we're hoping. And that's really all we know right now. I mean, there's been no indication, yes or no, at this point, but we're very hopeful that we will receive those monies.
So, the renewal of the charter contract, the existing contract ends on June thirtieth. Chesapeake has sent us a letter of request to renew the charter school, so we need to go back and look at what documents they need to provide to begin from there, not asking them for documents we already have, like their Park Report Card. We have scheduled monthly meetings between St. Mary's County Public School Directors from the various departments, the Alliance staff, Ms. Funya, to begin to work through that process. We don't expect any great big changes. And then the renewal is anticipated in June, and we would certainly bring it to you for, you know, your approval. We'll follow the process, so you have lots of opportunities to ask questions and work through it. Okay, wanna show your pictures and talk about the opening?
Sure.
So, we've, we've been open for two weeks.
Yes, they, they can talk about their opening at school.
It has been a, a, a great, a great period. Everybody kinda came right back in and was able to jump back in as though they had never left, so that was, that was really great. At the time we put this together, we were really just having our teachers back for their first days, so we had a lot of team-building activities, relationship-building activities for our staff. We have about fifty-five of us now, so, you know, with, with more kids comes more staffing, and so it is quite a large family that we have now. So, it is, it was a good opening, and we're excited that you all are about to join us because that somehow just feels like, okay, everybody is in session now, so. So, it went very well, we're very excited for start year twelve.
That's cool.
I know. And that is it. That's our quick update.
Wait, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, I loved your presentation though, so, great. Um, enjoy the rest of your school year, I'm loving the outdoor. Like, people don't go outside anymore, so it's really nice to see some kids outside. I can't pay my brother to get outside, so that's, keeps that.
It's a big focus at the school, so.
Well, I'm really excited to see your, the demographics changing to reflect more of what the student population is. And I know you talked about this sibling, you know, that there were some openings, so you were able to bring some siblings in. What else do you think that you've done this past year to help increase the awareness to parents and, and others in the community about your school? And to be able to, to reach out, you know, to, for people to apply? What have you done differently this year? Um, I think n- not different, but more of. A lot of outreach, our Alliance has a public outreach committee, and so representatives from that committee will go out into the community. We were just at the NAACP Back to School Fair on Saturday. We've gone to DSS to kind of go there with applications to help individuals as they're, they're receiving other services to say, hey, did you know this was an option for you in our community? A free public school option, because that is still often a myth that is out there that we are, we charge tuition, which we do not. We are out there in churches and libraries, and I have a great relationship through Kelly with the Title I Schools. The Head Start programs, the principals at the Title I Schools will do a lot to work with me to get the information out to their families that this is an option for them. So, I feel like we've, we've had a good presence in the community, and I think that has helped increase the numbers for us. Great, thanks, and thanks for doing all that work and getting the word out. I do have another question for you, and I'm gonna go to the audit. And I know that you, you stated that you were going through to fix things. What policies or procedures have you put in place to ensure that your procurement process is really being done correctly? Can I answer it? Go ahead. Sure, we, we do follow the same procurement process as the St. Mary's County Public Schools, so we have that behind us. We also have some internal control processes that our accountant, Carrie Campbell, has worked to create with Rob Springer as our liaison up here. In this particular case, where there was a, a finding in an internal control, it was really a matter of a professional development opportunity that several teachers went to, and we build them as separately as opposed to the auditor seeing that that was all.
The conference and the travel should have been put together.
Right. So, so it was just a little, a little thing like that. But, we were able to, to catch that and put some processes in place with requisitions and, and purchase orders that will rectify that situation. Okay, great, thank you.
My only question is on the federal grant. As part of the program expansion, if, if you receive that grant, what are you planning? Like, what is the plan with that money? And if you don't get it, are you gonna, could you backfill some of it with next year's budget? Just so it's not, you know, like, is it end-all be-all that if you don't get it, you can't do, she would like?
No, I mean, the, the short answer is no, it's not end-all be-all if we don't get it. The slightly longer answer, I mean, it's a thirty-seven-page grant proposal, so, thirty-seven, thirty, thirty-two, because we were limited to thirty-two. But, the short answer for what we would use the grant money is for is programming mostly.
Lot of materials of instruction.
A lot of materials of instruction.
Which we can easily cover in our materials of instruction budget if we need to, but this would be nice to tie up.
So you can, so you could expand.
Right, absolutely, and it's a three-year grant, so it wasn't all nine hundred thousand dollars upfront, it was over the course of three years, so it would help us with the expansion into fourth, fifth, and sixth grade.
Mm-hmm.
And essentially, what it will do is help free up a little bit of the money that we can't use in a grant to put toward capital improvements, but we can put using materials of instruction or kitchen equipment. We're growing, we have a lot more kids, we need additional kitchen equipment, things of that nature.
Wiring.
Yeah, for additional wireless and, and computers. And when we do move into the next part of the building, we're allowed to use that to make sure the fire alarms work well. All of those things that are critical for, for safety are, are included in the grant, so we were able to lump those in. But, at the same time, because it's over the course of the three years, if we need to build that into our operating budget over that time, we will do so.
Okay, and then I just have one, a question, and I think it was in, it might have been in the report that was attached, um, audited financial statements, s, um, your fundraising goals, did you meet them for this, for this calendar year?
Yeah.
And, um, so, and, so two questions.
Sure.
Number one, do you set aside that money each year and put it in your, uh, in your fund balance? Or do you use it as you, in the calendar year that you fundraise it?
It's in advance a year, so we're always fundraising the year before, for the next year.
So. For the subsequent year.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so, but are you, are you, are you kinda bankrolling that money in your fund balance? Or holding on to it for something bigger down the road?
Well, it's a separate budget than what our, yeah.
I understand that.
So our fundraising budget is its own budget.
Okay.
And that money gets used for basically things that set the charter school apart, like field trips and, um,
Artists in residence.
Some, the artists, a lot of most, the whole Artists in Residence Program, which is quite costly, and bus expenses for field trips. We also fund students who have need for, you know, there's a lot of field experiences at the charter school. And so, if there's a student who can't pay for a trip, then the Alliance budget helps to cover that. So, that's the bulk of our fundraising budget. What else?
Whatever, whatever board expenses are needed, so Alliance board insurance, things, things that are critical to the functioning of the nonprofit.
Insurance. Things that make us different than
A traditional school.
A traditional school.
Mm-hmm, and generally, we try to zero that out. I mean, we, we, we do have some that we have put into a reserve.
Well, that, that was my question, right.
We also, within our mortgage, have the reserve fund, so we pay it, you pay our mortgage, but we also pay into a reserve fund in case there was a catastrophe with the building. So that's separate as well.
Right. So, I, what I, what I, my question was, is if a portion of your fundraising is also being set aside to eventually combine with your, with your fund balance to, to supplement that fund balance, whatever that might be when you decide what to do with it in twenty twenty, so.
Mm-hmm. Most likely renovations on the building to, for the extra space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
I wanna thank you for continuing, in my opinion, to be the model charter school in the state of Maryland. It's a wonderful school. And whenever I visit, I'm always impressed what you, what you have on the ceilings, the walls, the floor. You have just stimulating art and thought-provoking ideas and quotes. I just love the school. Now, how many students do you have on your wait list?
More students than we have in the building.
Yeah, we, we had, we are up about five hundred right now. So we had about five hundred and one who applied through the lottery, and then we brought in, you know, all of our kindergarten students, a lot of them were siblings, but we were still, people continue to put in applications. So, we just got a phone call today about somebody else who wanted to add themselves to that list. So even though there were five hundred in the lottery, that list has now grown, I think, to five hundred and twenty-seven.
And that's good news because that indicates that the citizens are very pleased with the performance of your school, the way your school is run, your faculty, your staff, everyone there, they want to be in your school because it has an innovative approach. So thank you for all that you do. I really enjoy visiting the schools. I'm gonna thank you for correcting the notation that was indicated in the audit. You did it, you did it quickly, and you're just not a problem. So thank you for being collaborative and cooperative, and that's why your school continues to be, in my opinion, as I said, the best charter school in the state of Maryland. I mean, it has la, outlasted many charter schools because you've been in existence for over ten years, twelve years to be exact. That's, that's success, because a lot of charter schools do not last that long. And thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm grateful that things have gone as well as they have. I know at one time, we were all concerned because fundraising was going to be used for, for, um, salary, for really just, yeah, operational kinds of costs. And the fact that you are able to do this and, and utilize those funds for students in need and, and to improve the program, I think is just absolutely wonderful, so. I look forward to hopefully finding out that you get this grant. And I- Um, and I, um,
There will be a board update.
And, uh, yeah, I, that's what I'm, I'm hoping you'll do is, is come back and talk to us about what, you know, what the plans, specific plans for the grant are.
Yeah.
Um, I think that will be exciting, so fingers crossed. Do you have any idea how much federal money the, um, MSD has to be able to spread across?
There is a, M- uh, Maryland won a seventeen million dollar, um, grant for, federal grant for charter schools.
That's what I thought.
Now, there are pieces to that. There are, um, the grants like C- CCSA applied for that is for an expanding charter school or a new star, uh, charter school, because there is an initiative to foster charter schools in the state of Maryland. There's also professional development that's built in for the people who serve as the school systems authorizer. That's been there. Um, there are some other, like, technical assistance kinds of things that will happen that there hasn't been a lot of, all of that is built into this, this grant, so there are pieces to it.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I think it's also a multi-year process.
It is, yeah, it's not seventeen million in one year.
Understand, yeah, they can't really
Five million this year, which they expect to, to award to five schools, so.
Um, congratulations. Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, yeah.
Thank you.
Hope to send you a board update.
Very soon.
Tomorrow.
Nothing, but just, thank you for a, thank you for a great presentation, and, um, we look forward to this year and, and working through all and so that we can reauthorize for another session. It'd be great. Wonderful, wonderful work. And you, and you really do, and everybody, when you come and visit the school, um, it's just, it's a, it's a loved school. It's a great sense of community. It really is, um, what we, what we hope, what we hope. When, when somebody says that they, they wanna start a charter school and they wanna focus and they want it to be in this, you really truly are the model. And, um, you've really built something quite special, and we're very, very proud of all that you do. Good, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else? Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September twelfth at nine AM, bright and early, and we are adjourned.